...sessions meeting, October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We'll start with Mr. Eddie Partridge, if you could make your way, sir, from the First Baptist Church of Palatka. Thank you for being here. He'll do our invocation. Our pledge will be led by Clerk of Courts, Tim Smith.
Bow with me in prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we do thank you for the day you have given us today. As we approach your throne, God, this morning, God, we just ask and we petition to you, Father, that you would ordain this meeting and be with each and every one of the people, these commissioners, this morning, as they table concerns and discuss things. Father, how great it is to know you and understand that you are a loving God, that you gave your Son, Jesus Christ, for us, that, Father, he went to a cross and died for the sins of each and every one of us here in this room. And, Father, I lift up each and every one of these commissioners to you this morning, that, Father, that the life that has been given to them, Father, when you created them, you created them with purpose. And with that purpose in mind was to bring honor and glory to your name. And, Father, this morning, I pray that you would use these men and women, that this morning, God, that as this, this, uh, meeting takes place, that we continue on, and being mindful of the commandment, to love you, Lord, to love our Lord, our God, with all our heart, soul, mind, and strength, and everything that we have, God, that we give you, that we bring honor and glory to your name. We love you and we thank you, and it's in Jesus' name that we pray. And all of God's people said, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in pledging the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eddie, thank you so much. Commissioners, in front of you, have the meeting minutes from September twenty-third. If you have a chance for review, if you do review them, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion on the floor, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next, we've got a whole lot of celebrities, our constitutional officers, if you can make your way down to the podium. We have Linda Myers, Tim Parker, and Tim Smith in the house today. I actually don't see Tim Parker, but, um, we have a proclamation and...
Good morning.
Good morning. How are y'all?
We are great. We are glad to be here. It's an opportunity again to speak to the citizens of Putnam County through this board meeting. We truly appreciate it. Um, I have a couple of items on the agenda, but if you don't mind, we'll start with the... Oh, well, the proclamation is not us.
No, it's not. I've got...
I'm looking at the proclamation. It is not us.
You, you people are informative. The proclamation will be next on the agenda. Thank you.
Well, Tim and I are here to certainly welcome and invite the five of you and the whole, the whole staff family of Putnam County to an open house in West Putnam, but also to the citizens who are in the audience and are listening, and will be listening for the next couple of days. It's a very exciting day. Prior to the West Putnam office, folks in West Putnam and South Putnam would have to either come to the main office in Palatka, or there was a traveling mobile van. Uh, we've made great strides, and we're here to celebrate and invite you to celebrate with us twenty years of our three offices supporting West Putnam citizens in West Putnam, that entire time at Hitchcock's Plaza. So, we have an event, um, that is this Thursday, so just two days from now, from ten to four, and, um, I think Tim Smith will maybe want to comment. He will be there, uh, Tim Parker will be there, as well as bringing staff with him to, to do some informative opportunities for citizens. Uh, there's an ad in the paper that talks a little bit about it, but, uh, Tim, I know you're going to be there from twelve to one. Did you want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and commissioners, for the opportunity to, uh, highlight the success of the West Putnam office. And, uh, I know that I speak for all of the constitutional officers, just as I would for you, that this is about service to the citizens that ask us to serve and that allow us to have these jobs, and that's to try to find opportunities to make that interaction with county government, or state government, or the courts, whatever you happen to be representing, uh, much more easier and convenient. So, uh, we hope that, uh, folks will take the opportunity to come by, uh, uh, look at the office out there. If you haven't been, find out where it is. With just about every service that, uh, we provide, uh, we can assist you with there. And, uh, so we're looking forward to that, and we, uh, thank, uh, the commission for also supporting, uh, the West Putnam Service Center in addition to the Crescent City, uh, area. And, uh, and I see, uh, Charles Overturf out here, and I know at the Crescent City office that they use it for their early voting sites. So, uh, you know, those are really good services that, uh, allow folks to access our offices without a great deal of travel. So, uh, thank you, and thank you, Linda.
Well, the commission would like to thank you guys also. Your innovative approach to this, uh, amenity, really, in the county means a lot with the price of gas what it is these days, and thank you for making these services available in all areas of our county.
I'd like to echo the chairman. Again, we do not see your services as an accessory, but it's a necessity, and, uh, we are very grateful, uh, that these offices causes all of our citizens to understand that they are equally important to us, even in the, uh, far extreme ends of our county.
Thank you. So, just as a reminder, from, um, ten to twelve, Tim Parker and staff will be there to talk specifically to the citizens who might want to come about the things that their officer involved with, green belt exemptions, uh, different appraisals and value, and where they, they, um, how that's done, and, uh, about what's going on with the value adjustment board as well, so... And then from twelve to one, Tim Smith with staff will be there, and from one to four, the tax electors office will be there. I think most of us will be there all day, but we've just kind of set this aside, so, you know, if a citizen says, "Hey, I want to know about the tax bill," they can come from one to four. And also, we just wanted to thank, uh, Poppy's Restaurant in Interlock, and they will be providing, uh, cookies throughout the day. So, um, we're, it's a West Putnam business we want to support, and they're supporting us. We actually have a picture, um, of Mike Noon, Ed Brooks, and Larry Pritchett, celebrating their first anniversary. So, now, the three of us will be celebrating the twentieth anniversary. It's a very special time, and we hope you can join us.
Mr. Chairman, if you must...
Yes.
I was on the radio this morning speaking about the mobile unit that was out there, and for those of you who, uh, are from the west end, there's a power pole still standing there with the fuse box and all the plugs that the, um, Mr. Noon would plug in, the little motor home, and he would sit there all day and bring his work back and come back out there. And, uh, it's just been a blessing to have that office in the West Putnam, and so I thank you for your commitment on that.
I find it really hard to believe it's been twenty years.
I know.
Wow.
And, and quite honestly, Crescent City will be, in the next year as well, will be celebrating twenty or twenty-one. We're still trying to... It was in two different locations in Crescent City, so we're still trying to finalize that, but we're not think, we're not leaving you out, South Putnam. We, we look forward to being down there as well. Thank you for that.
Thank you to all you...
So, I'm going to turn to a little bit of serious business. Once a year, we sometimes have to come to the board and ask permission to extend the role. Um, what that means, and I think you all have a letter in your packet, um, sometimes the value adjustment board, and a couple of you I know are on that board, okay, have not had an opportunity to finish their work so that we have a certified role in time for November first. But we have citizens who really want that bill as soon as they can get it. They expect it by November first, and because the value adjustment board is going to meet in November after that date, we come to the board, we did this last year, and ask you, um, by this letter to allow us to go ahead and send out the bills in time to meet the, the, the needs of our citizens. They get very concerned if it doesn't come out in that timely manner. By statute, we are allowed to ask this, and, and we, um, asked that today. I believe you have a copy of that. I don't know, uh, Mr. Castleberry, if that's a by motion or just acceptance, or...
Yeah, yeah, it'd be... Do you have a copy of the letter?
They do in their packet, but I have a copy here as well.
We didn't get it in time to put it in the packet, but there was one in the boxes. Commissioner Flag was blessed with one.
Well, I have another, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Let me just review it real quick. We'll bring it...
I think we promised you just standing... We could have waited till the, till the next meeting, but that's October twenty-eighth, and we just felt like that was too close to leave it up in the air to that respect.
This is allowed by statute, and it's, it's customary. Okay, so we need a, a motion, uh, unless or we don't.
Mr. Chairman, I so move that the board authorize extension of the two thousand and fourteen tax roll prior to the completion of the value adjustment board hearings, as provided by Florida statute. Uh, I serve as chair of the value adjustment board, and we do have a meeting, um, past that, and so in compliance with the law, so move.
Okay, we have motion on the floor. And a second. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and it passes. Linda, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Now, I'm going to take off that serious note for a moment and, um, share with you, as you know, we highlight a specialty plate every month. This month, we are highlighting, I'm going to, we're, I don't know where the cameras are, maybe right there? This is the I Care license plate. If you purchase this license plate, a twenty dollars of your cost goes to breast cancer research in the state of Florida at foundations here in the state of Florida. So, um, that's this month, and obviously, it's this month because this is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So, in your packet, you've got, um, not only the bag highlighting the plate, but some information on, um, it's a, on, on the whole breast cancer awareness projects going on around our county and, of course, around the nation this month. So, we wanted to share that with you and, and with the citizens, that that is an opportunity for them to contribute in a, in a meaningful way. So, with that, we appreciate, again, the opportunity to be before you and to reach our citizens with this service.
Okay, and we thank you, and, uh...
If no questions, I'm going to sit down and listen to the rest of this. And, Mr. Chairman, this is yours. If you felt a little shorted, this one's yours.
Don't run off with it. This program has really taken off, I mean, right to our NFL players wearing pink cleats. It's amazing what's been done here. If we, other projects could have this kind of robust launch, it is just amazing. It really is. Nothing short of it. Everywhere you look is, is pink men, you know, uh, built men wearing pink, you know, for awareness.
Mr. Chairman, right here in Putnam County, on Saturday, Pop Warner Football had their kickoff, and so they were anywhere from five to, I think, thirteen. If it's not all little boys, it looked like it was all little boys, they all had pink socks on. It was really an awesome sight to see a couple hundred of them running around with their pink socks, to your point.
Thank you for sharing that with us this morning.
Thank you as well.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, uh, we have a proclamation that Commissioner Flag will read into the record, and I'd like to invite, uh, we're in the house, we have Representative Lay Rake with a... Lake, right, there I go again, Lake Ray, trying to do it back... Yeah, bring your group up, if you would, please, sir. We'll have, you've got a whole bunch with you this morning. I see her. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we've got to do some opening comments and, uh...
Great. Well, thank you so much. It's a, a great honor and pleasure to, uh, come and be down here in an area that is very familiar with me, as we were talking earlier today before the meeting started, that, uh, Palatka and Putnam County are certainly near and dear to me, and it's always, uh, just nice to come home back where, uh, while it wasn't my home, it was for two years while I was over at, uh, Saint John's River Junior College back in those days.
State college, Joe Vikings.
Uh, yeah, and, and where I formerly stayed at the Mellon Manor Apartment Complex, for those of you who remember Mellon Manor. Uh, and, uh, of course, across the road from, uh, where we are today, used to be the, it was the Pizza Hut, uh, where they had the all-you-can-eat pizza, and enjoying, uh, as a college student, the number of evenings over there where I ate way too much pizza. But, uh, my memories are very fond of, uh, of Palatka, of, uh, Putnam County, and my grandfather spent a number of his, uh, more senior years down here, so it's always a great pleasure to come and, and be down here, be among, uh, people that have always been near and dear to me. Uh, we, uh, we have a number of people here today for the resolution that you are, uh, presenting and, uh, I, I hope will be approving, uh, related to the Manufacturers Week, or, excuse me, not week, it's the month, uh, that, that we're having. And I would like, if it would be all right with you, Mr. Chairman, just to let them, uh, walk by, introduce themselves very briefly, uh, because it is about the area as a whole, and then, uh, maybe we could do the resolution. And I would like to spend just a couple moments on top of that to talk a little bit more about manufacturing and what's going on at the state, and how this wonderful county can participate in things that will make a difference for you and for our state.
Okay. Thank you, Representative.
Hey, thanks for having us today. I'm Barry Dixon. I'm the CEO of True House. Uh, here locally, we have True Trust Palatka right around two oh seven. Uh, we just celebrated our seventeenth year here in Palatka. We opened up October first, nineteen ninety-seven, that my plant manager, James Brown, who's been with us since day one, uh, just informed me, I said, "What day did we open?" He goes, "October first, nineteen ninety-seven." And then I have Jesse Seitz, our, um, our general, our manager for the entire, all our manufacturing facilities. Thank you for having us today.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Good to see you, James.
And as you guys are well aware, I'm Dave Cobb with Florida Power and Light, and, uh, Mike Garman, uh, who works here in Palatka with us as well, which I think you all know. And I have had the, uh, privilege of representing FPL with both First Coast Manufacturers and the Manufacturers Association of Florida for, for many years, and we really, uh, uh, like and support this group very well. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, we, we do, and, and of course, commissioners, we do very much, uh, appreciate the chance to come down, uh, and be with you today. And if I may just tell you just a few things about manufacturing and, and why it's important, and I, I know that you're aware of that as well, of, of the importance, and, uh, one of our other manufacturers in the, the area here, Georgia Pacific, uh, sent their regrets that they had some different changes that are going on, and unfortunately, they weren't able to be with us this morning. But, uh, certainly, they are a, uh, big manufacturer, powerhouse in terms of, uh, employment, uh, in, uh, in the immediate regional area as well as the county. Manufacturing is really so important in the, because for every job that we create in manufacturing, it's like creating three jobs, because there's the support in terms of moving the goods, uh, either to a plant or out of a plant, there's administrative positions and things of that nature. And so, for every job that we create, it's like creating three jobs. Uh, we have an interesting opportunity, uh, that's occurring, uh, right now in the, the national scene, and Putnam County and, and the First Coast, and we consider you a part of that, and I think and believe and certainly hope that you consider yourselves a part of that as well, but we have this great opportunity to capture that. And that's that, when we look at manufacturing, people are wanting to come back to the United States. A number of these positions and jobs were lost, and they went international, uh, to their locations. And there's, there's a couple of reasons why, and that's because the cost of labor and the cost of materials and equipment, uh, and, uh, energy changed during the course of the last twenty years, but it's changing back now. If you look back twenty years ago, that cost was about fifty percent labor and about fifty percent, uh, materials and energy. And now, because of technologies, people are coming back to the United States because it's thirty percent the cost of, of labor and about seventy percent the cost of energy and, uh, of materials. And because energy, while I don't like three dollars and fifty cents a gallon for gasoline, it is still cheaper here in the United States than it is anywhere else. And so, we have this opportunity because people like our products, we stand behind our products, we have the best workforce in the world by far, it's the most productive. So, when people are starting to look at where can they get the most productivity with the least cost in terms of energy consumption, they're looking at coming back to the United States. And so, why would you come back to the United States? That's the driving reason, because the world wants our products and because of those other issues. But why would you come to our region? It's because we have this interesting logistical opportunity that we have, uh, and the state has been engaging in it. So, Freight Mobility Plan. I'm not sure how involved you have been as a county, but I would love to come back and to talk with you about how you can engage in that, how you can use the Freight Mobility Plan to capture dollars that are made available, to use that for increasing your manufacturing base, and for increasing training and, and, uh, skill training that we want for our workers. One of the things that we will need as we move forward will be a skilled workforce, and that's where this county, along with this regional area as a whole, have the opportunity to work to get skilled workforce training available to our people, because after all, it is going to be about jobs and about how we stabilize that. And the one thing that is lacking, not just in the state, but nationally, and it is a national concern, today, today in the United States, there are over six hundred and fifty thousand jobs that are available that cannot be filled, because the skilled workforce does not exist. Now, there, there's a lot of training that's going on at the First Coast Manufacturers Association, we're working with that, and we would enjoy that opportunity to come down, to work with you, to join with us, to make opportunities for your citizens, and make opportunities for our region of how we can grow those and, and capture that. And I would enjoy that opportunity to come down to a place that I love, that is near and dear to me, and to spend some time with you and work, uh, work through that. We, in the legislature, have, have banded together, and we're not about Duval County, we're not about Clay County, we're not about Saint John's, we're about every county from Putnam, Flagler, Clay, Saint John's, Baker, Columbia, Nassau, and Duval, and bringing all that together because we believe that we can represent all of our interests a whole lot better, and yours is just as important to me as it is to the, the balance of them. And I hope that you'll give us that opportunity to come and spend some time with you, and tell you a little bit more about our manufacturing association, about ways that we may be of service to you and to work in the community. Uh, and, uh, on my, my parting, uh, I would like to just give you a little bit of information about, uh, the Manufacturers Association, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh...
No, please.
Pass this forward.
Lake, and, uh, we'll take you up on that invitation. I'm going to turn to our county administrator. I know you were here two years ago with a group, and the conversation was equally as good, and our membership in the Jack's Chamber has served us well, and we look to improve upon that, and we can couple it even further with your organization, and let's do so.
Well, let's, let's, let's plan that, and let's do that before we get into session, because there's some things that we can get into, uh, that we may be able to help and look out for the interest of, of your county and of our region.
That would be nice.
And I, I would invite that and, and look forward to that, and I will be glad to engage with your local representative, and I think that that is, uh, Representative Anzant, uh, as well as, uh, let me see, I think your senator, is that Bradley that's, uh...
Thrasher.
Thrasher, okay. Well, there's going to be some changes that are going to be there, uh, but, you know, I think the good news is, is that, uh, we have a good...
Bradley's a friend.
...working relationship with, with any of those who may be the replacement for him. He's, uh, certainly been a great, uh, senator, uh, for, uh, for our region. We'll miss him from that standpoint. I'm sure that, that other university up there, what, what that? That, I'm sure they're going to benefit...
Behind you there's something.
Yes. I'm sure they're going to benefit from that, but we will all make sure to pull together to, to fill in any gaps and, and work with you for your, you know, for your future.
Particularly Representative Ray, I just want to put a bug in your ear, because you're the person, you know? The Shands Bridge is a huge impediment to this county and everything you're advocating right now, and we're working very hard to have that reconfigured. I know that the FDOT plans on, uh, changing it and building a new one in the second phase of the outer beltway, but we need action before then. We need that center span to go up and down, and our working waterfronts would explode here. I mean, just absolutely explode. They're in place already, but we can, we need that medium-sized ship down here. Remember that.
May, may I add one thing to that conversation for each of you to remember, because if I fail in, in future conversations to be able to mention that, there's some federal dollars, there's a lot of interest at the federal level on the Federal Transportation, uh, DOT, the US DOT. They're looking a lot at what they call short sea shipping. Say that fast a few times. Uh, it's a little, little difficult to say, but short sea shipping, and there's a lot of focus and a lot of interest in monies that can be made available to you because of the use, being able to use our river, and those dollars can be made available to where the, things that can be moved, not necessarily, uh, across the road because of the weights, but there's a lot of monies that are available in that. And I've spent some time, uh, up in Washington speaking with them, and I would suggest that you might want to think in those terms of how you can use that. I certainly will be glad to engage the FDOT, uh, on that as well and use some of those dollars.
We have, we have a meeting next week with Congresswoman Brown on the subject. She's coming here to us, and, um, short sea shipping.
Short, short sea shipping, yes.
I can say that fast.
Say it fast.
Not three times.
Representative, thank you.
Thank you very much for the time, and we really do appreciate, and I'm sure I've, uh, overdone my, my time, but I do look forward to coming down and being back with you.
You have a great reputation as a hard worker. It resonates as far down south as here, and we thank you for looking out for us. We really do.
Well, thank you for your...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Per your request, I'm honored to present Putnam County Proclamation Number two thousand fourteen dash fifty-six, two thousand and fourteen Florida Manufacturing Month. Whereas recognizing Manufacturing Day on the first day of the month of October and recognizing Manufacturing Month throughout October is an effective way to expand knowledge about the value manufacturing brings to Florida's economy and to showcase the high-skilled, high-paid manufacturing jobs needed by the industry. And whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of the economy of Florida and the United States of America, with each job directly created by manufacturing expenditures, an additional one point seven jobs are created through indirect and induced impacts. And whereas each day, thousands of manufacturing jobs go unsealed in Florida because of a lack of skill. And whereas manufacturing provides high-wage, high-skill jobs for over twenty-five thousand workers in the First Coast region of northeast Florida, and makes products as diverse as flavors and fragrances and medical devices to coffee, paper, machine parts, and surgical instruments. And whereas First Coast Manufacturers Association, FCMA, an organization representing manufacturers, logistics, and associated firms in northeast Florida, whose members employ more than fifty percent of the total manufacturing workers in the region, and generating nearly fifteen percent of the total gross regional product, supports manufacturing and manufacturing careers. And whereas FCMA, the Florida Trade Grant Consortium Colleges, Florida's career source, the Manufacturers Association of Florida Center for Manufacturing Excellence, supported by the Regional Manufacturers Associations, and the Florida Advanced Technological Education Center of Excellence, FLATE, encourage Florida manufacturers to open their factory doors to high school students, college students, and veterans during that month for touring, inspiring them to career, to consider a career in manufacturing. Whereas by working together with educational institutions, manufacturers will begin to address the skilled labor shortage they face, connect with future generations, build the next generation of skilled manufacturing employees, take charge of the public image of manufacturing, and ensure the ongoing prosperity of the whole industry. And whereas Putnam County commends and supports this important cause and organizations involved. Mr. Chairman, I so move that we proclaim the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners and declare October as Manufacturing Month, and that the first Friday of this month be declared as Manufacturing Day in Putnam County, and urge all Floridians, especially Putnam Countyans, to join in recognizing the value of our manufacturers and the importance they serve in our county, state, and nation. I so move, sir.
I second it.
Motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and...
Yes.
And commissioners, we, we do very much appreciate your time.
It sounds so busy, you're quiet over there.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have public comment, and we have Charles Overturf from Supervisor of Alexa's Office, and I know you need to go first for obvious reasons.
Good morning.
Good. Couple of thoughts this morning for you. First of all, I wanted to congratulate publicly Larry Harvey and Chip Lawwell for being returned to this fine board.
Thank you.
I don't think most people appreciate how hard it is to put your name on the line until you do it, or somebody close in your family does it, to the time, the effort, the money, the stress, the good times and the good, bad times that, that you face. So, uh, just wanted you all to know that. Uh, also want to tell you thank you for, uh, not just you all, but all the candidates that we had this year. Everyone was very... Everyone was very easy to work with, very willing to listen to try to make sure that we all could do the best job we could. So, I just wanted to express that. Also want to thank Mr. Castleberry for his knowledge and expertise. He came over during our recount that we had, and really was very helpful and gave us a lot of good advice and helped us do a great job, I think, for the citizens. So, Russ, thank you for that help, and also for Mr. Pelisir for, he serves as your representative on our canvassing board and has been great to come in and really take charge and work with us and help us out. So Walton, thank you for, for that also. The other thing, and probably the more important thing that I wanted to do was through the help of Mr. Leary, we have been able to set our ceremony that we will have, and of course, you two and all of you are invited to come. It will be five weeks from today, and that is Tuesday, November the 18th at nine o'clock. Mr. Leary has said that we could use the room here so that we can have as many people as you can invite, and it will be the time when the judge will administer your oath and swear you in for your new term. Just to let you know, we also have the four school board members that are planning on being here, and also our county judge, Judge Morris will begin her term, even though it won't start till January, but because she will be the only one in January, she's agreed that she would like to join you all. So, I think it's gonna be a really wonderful morning, you know, we'll be here and, and get you all sworn in so your new terms can start. I think if I figured it out right, your terms end on that, the night before, the day of, and the school board does also, so it's gonna work really well, and I know the school board already has a reorganization meeting later that morning. So, I think it'll work great. So again, thank you for the help of the administration here of working with us, and we just look forward to inviting you and your families to be with us and to have a, a great ceremony.
And Charles, you're being very humble, and I know you won't congratulate yourself, but I believe, I'm just sitting there thinking, this is your first election, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
And I just want to commend you, and I'm sure on behalf of the board, we all feel the same. That office is running well. You did a great job, and we really salute your effort, and you really go for the details. You, you, he calls candidates, and I can attest to that, that you're, you're great to work with.
Well, thank you, and I've got a good staff here.
Chairman, I might, one, make one small comment. Mr. Over turf and I were, we were really baptized by fire that night of the recount. Judge Morris's husband had a heart issue, and she was called away to his side, and he and I were left there, and through Mr. Castleberry's guidance, we were able to persevere, but I was very, very nervous. I will not kid you.
We're glad you made it through.
Yes, we did, yes, we did.
Charles' leadership. Okay, next on public comment, we have Wanda Ruckowitz with us this morning. Come on down, and good morning.
I'm here today to kind of make an announcement for all of Putnam County. I am the president of the QI Roberts Band in Florahome. I have issued invitations to all of you, but I would like to know if you could please be there on October 21st at seven o'clock. These children are our tomorrow, and you really need to come hear them. They are beyond, they have taken superior, they've taken excellence, they've actually been to Troy, Alabama, and performed at Troy University, they took silver, and they took cardinal. That's an honor, and they've been to Tampa and took superior in jazz and in symphonic. If you could please be there, they would really appreciate seeing you, and thank you.
Thank you for being here, and end of the announcement. Uh, Fay Sparkman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today I have three questions, so if I could please just ask the questions, and then you can answer them. First question, Mr. Lible, could you please explain MSBU's because that's what most District Four is? Why the people cannot get dirt to payment? Second question would be from Mr. Flag because you were a sitting mayor. How comes we can get not get businesses in our city? Firehouse sub has went to Corbett, and they were told no. Krispy Kreme went to their Corbett, they were told no. So maybe you could answer as to why we can't get businesses. My last question is from Mr. Castleberry. Did you ever find out about the ordinance on a landfill?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Is there an ordinance or something, why we can never sell the landfill? Did you check that out?
I wasn't asked to check that out.
Do we have one, or we don't have one?
Ordinance why you could never sell the landfill?
Yeah, it was on.
The first I've heard about that. Well, obviously, there's no such ordinance.
Okay, I'd asked you about it probably a month ago, you said you were gonna check it out. So there is none good.
Well, I, I, certainly we wouldn't have proceeded down a path to sell our landfill if there was an ordinance prohibiting it, so.
This was asked, thank you.
And MSBU, Ms. Sparkman, is a municipals, a services, municipals' benefit services unit. And if you're not satisfied as a resident in your neighborhood, and say you want additional maintenance on a road, let's just use that because that's typical, you can band together with your neighbors and contribute extra monies each month to have additional roadwork done of any kind, and any other services that might be administered under Public Works.
So how would that be changed for all the people that were supposed to be able to get dirt to payment with all the extra tax money that we pay? How could that ever be changed?
Uh, I can't answer that right now. I had no privilege, privilege, I hadn't researched any of that, but I can look it up for you.
Thank you.
Why would you want to change it?
Um, because we're seeing other parts of the district get dirt to payment, and the part that I'm on, I'm not in the MSBU, but I got stopped a couple of times, wanted to know how I got done what I did. And I'm not in their MSBU, so they're all really concerned, and because what happened was 20 years ago, we were an MSTU on our side. They had a board hearing, I believe it was at the high school, I think it was their first term on the board, and they made us go to an MSBU, and at that time I called the governor's offices 20 years ago, and they said MSBU's were a very fine line of being illegal. So that's why I'm asking questions. How can we ever get dirt to payment when we all pay the same taxes at the gas pump everybody else does? That's why I asked you.
Well, MSTU or BU many times provide a very good surface, and when we're looking at roads for the coming year to turn dirt to pavement, we look for those bases that are, are less costly to build from the beginning. Public Works will go out and evaluate how much it will cost to make a road base for pavement, and any of the, the properties or roads in the MSTUs or BU's usually are ready to go, and cheaper, and actually score higher, so just think about that one.
I just went, I was told to ask the question I did.
Well, that's the truth.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the question that was referred to me actually could be best answered by Mayor Vernon Myers and with consultation with Alex McCoy, as it relates to inquiries about entities wanting to come into the community. Of times, individuals who are interested in our community, they come under the radar because of the nature of their business, are coming in, they look at all of the various circumstances or facets of why they want to come in the first place. Obviously, they do their marketing studies, they evaluate the infrastructure and, and things of that nature. And so, we don't get necessarily all of the information to us while these individuals are working silently with Development Authority or with the chamber, et cetera, but I certainly can connect with either of the two, or both of them, and find out those specific concerns. Those are the two specific entities that you were told that were interested in coming?
Yes, sir, we're friends with the man that owns the franchise in St. Augustine, and we go over there quite a bit. And he has a lot of people come from Satsuma that call their orders in. So he called Corbett because he wanted to come here with his own money and open the business here, and he was told absolutely no.
Okay, I certainly would recommend that this gentleman be put in touch with Alex McCoy, and he can certainly call here, and we will find out exactly what barriers, you know, sometime, it, you know, it does not necessarily meet the eye, what barriers are there, but I can't believe anybody that's in leadership in this county would flat out and blatantly say no to a business that's interested in coming.
Well, I want, I just wanted to ask you, because we went back over there last Sunday to get all the information. I got his card, the corporate office number, anything like that, so I did get that.
Provide that information, we certainly will follow through.
I gave it to Mr. Harvey this morning, so he can share that with all of you.
But you asked me the question, I wish Mr. Harvey would've got the question, since he knows more about it.
I, I'll share with you.
Well.
But I just wanted to let you know, because I'm out and about, and some of those things might help. Maybe they don't employ a lot of people, but at least us jobs.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Harvey, you're taking that?
Yes, I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Good morning, John.
How everybody doing this morning?
Good, thank you.
I got some more three questions, and first of all, I'd like to go back to Ms. Nancy Harris. Ms. Nancy, um, at the last meeting when we was talking about Cisco Road, did you not say that the reason of paving that road was for the ambulances, the school buses, and the law enforcement and all to travel, right? Okay, if you would take time when you leave here today, go over to the East Palaca Fire Department and look at the potholes in that parking lot and how that driveway of each vehicle backing in that building looked like a ruffleboard, you would kind of think about that. It's a shame that those guys have the, the other, right now there's water still setting in those potholes. Now, they get an emergency call, they got to pull the truck out of there, step in and out of that, there water and stuff just to go to it, but you can take asphalt and pave a long dirt road, but yet you can't put enough there. I bought a few loads of millings yesterday, and was one guy that said he wished they could get something to put in the potholes, and it's kind of sad to have nice, clean vehicles, and you got all those potholes in front of the building. Mr. Flag, do you recall about a month or two, we went to the workshop, and we sat in there, and we talked about all the ditches and stuff that needed to be cleaned in the area of East Palaca. They had a piece of cardboard with the areas that they was gonna, you know, actually do and all, and I'm wondering what did they do with the cardboard? They must've throwed it away, cause down Cracker Swamp, Putnam Boulevard, some of those areas, it is so bad where the water's just puddling up after dark. I got to go in the house because the mosquitoes get so bad, they bite you through a pair of blue jeans. And I'm just wondering what happened? That's why I don't like to go to behind closed-door meetings, because, you know, everybody seems to, to forget, but when you stand a month where a lot of more people can see what was said. Now, Mr. Roberts said they were gonna clean down Putnam Boulevard. They went about right at Putnam Boulevard and the Cracker Swamp Road, about 20 foot on both sides of the covert, and cleaned it, and that's it. And then down the main road, he said they were gonna clean just about down to the county line, them same old trees, tires, and sticks and all, still laying in the ditch.
Part of what you're describing this morning, code violation issues, and the Public Works Department, again, presented to us the, I would say, the itinerary or the proposed format. There's a lot of things that, that's happening when we meet. Again, they will update us, so under public comments, it's very difficult for me or for them to come before us and say what has happened and what didn't happen, but I'm certainly sure that we will have that update in our next transportation meeting, and that information will be relayed as it relates to what you feel has not happened.
Well, if you can look, it ain't nothing happened, that's what I'm saying. You know, we went to the meeting, and you know, it gave you, he had that big white piece of cardboard, all the areas they were gonna cover. Well, none of the areas really gotten covered, to the point that, you know, for what he said during that time they were supposed to been doing, and every time I would talk to him, he said they had an emergency, they had an emergency, and it just seemed like it had got swept under the road.
Well, I can assure you of one thing, something is happening, may not be precisely what you thought should've happened or what was printed on a piece of paper, because again, our Public Works Department, there are issues that we're dealing with as it relates to the manpower issues, the material issues, and always the money situation there, but we can be more specific. Your concerns are being documented as you speak, we can be more specific on what should've, could've, would've happened had, you know, things not come up, but I, I don't have a problem doing a follow-up with you, but there is no way for me to give you a precise answer today.
Well, the, the ordeal was, is the dishes need to be cleaned, the mosquitoes are getting bad in that area. We don't have a mosquito truck to come around there, and it don't make sense, all this here setting water, stagnant water, and these mosquitoes are steady raising, and then now, look how long it's been. It's been over three months of this here, and there's really no excuse for it.
The mosquito issue, again, is a department, and those issues, again, can be dealt with. We have a lot of different, again, departments that are integrated to make these solutions work, and they do try to coordinate and work together, but if there is a mosquito issue that is well above what the norm is, then that should be called in so that it is immediately addressed, or to buy some time until Public Works can actually get to the locations that they need to get to. They're speaking with the administrator, they're communicating with us as legislators to become as efficient as they possibly can in these areas. Uh, it's very easy to say, we don't, we're not doing this, and we're not doing that, but just in any business, if the money is, is not being maximized, if the manpower is not being efficient, then that to me is where the issues are, and we have to work with all of those things, and don't have a problem following up with you.
Okay, well, one more thing, but you know, I like the way you use those big words when you talk, but you know, during the time I was telling you about the big ditch they keep cleaning constantly for the farmer, now for some apparent reason, I see they got the machine out there ready to clean another ditch that's actually added to the same one, but yet we can't even get our ditch. But now, when I talk, there's a money problem, but when other people talk, they can get something done. Now, just take time and ride by there and look for the machine, and then you thank yourself.
Let me, let me see this, just before you leave, Mr. Spel. Number one, we're not doing anything for the farmers, okay?
Who is it for?
It's for Putnam County.
Okay.
So, let's, let's not get that part twisted. Uh, whether you are a commercial, industrial, whether you're a business person, whether you are a private citizen, uh, we're doing that, and we try to do our very best to work with all citizens, whether, again, they're private citizens, whether they're business citizens, all are our customers, and we're doing our best to try to make that happen. I always welcome and appreciate your commentary, uh, as it relates to, because there's merits to some of the things that you bring to us, and so there is no problem with you openly discussing those things. I just don't appreciate when it's a condemnation hearing, if you basically are just blaming us and saying that we're not doing anything, then that constitutes a problem. Just say that we're not as efficient in those areas that you think we ought to be efficient in, and we can certainly pay some more attention to that. I don't have a problem at all. Glad to see you all the time, certainly we didn't just meet, and I just know that there are greater things to come. So, keep bringing the information. What would help is that if we got the information prior to the meeting, then at least we can give the Public Works Department benefit of knowing that these are the concerns, and keep doing that. We want check and balance, we want accountability, responsibility, et cetera, there, so, but thank you.
Well, Mr. Flag, I don't believe in sugarcoating, okay? Now, I understand, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me finish, please. Okay, that same ditch that's dumping all that water on the community in Orange Mill is the same ditch they continually digging on one end. Now, if you can't make it down there to relieve the water that's going on the community, why are you continually keep digging it to get it out of the field?
That's an engineering question, and again, I do not have a problem making sure that this followed through. We do know that the magnitude of the canal issue is bigger than Putnam County's resources, and so there are efforts being made to make sure that, number one, equipment, contractors, and qualifications, all of those things are done, and if Carl Flag had a magic wand, I would wave it, and that situation would be one of the first things that would change. It is a slow process, unfortunately, but your commentary is not falling on deaf ears.
I don't know.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody else from the public this morning, public comment, your time. Okay, seeing none, commissioners, we'll move to item six. Are we okay on the break? Anybody need a break?
No, I'm good, we're good.
I have, I have nothing to pull from consent.
Okay.
I have nothing to pull, Mr. Chairman.
I have nothing.
Ms. Harris?
I so move that consent agenda be authorized and approved after presented, sir.
I'll second it.
Motion second on the floor for the consent agenda, all in favor of passage, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um.
Commissioner Harris.
Didn't want to pull item C, but I think it would be good to bring it to the audience that we're going to defer the first meeting of November to Wednesday, November the 12th, because of the Veterans Day hos, uh, holiday, so instead of meeting on our regular Tuesday, we'll meet on the next Wednesday.
Okay, thank you for bringing that. Okay, thank you for bringing that out. We appreciate it. Okay, number seven has been pulled. Commissioners, to be discussed at a later date, and we'll go to number eight. Codes enforcement with Mr. John Simmons. Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Salmon is setting up, for the benefit of all concerned, number seven is the Parks and Recreation Committee recommendation, and that was pulled, according to my understanding, by the City of Palatka, not by Putnam County.
It was.
Just want to make sure the record reflects that that was not pulled by us.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
I'm not sure why it's not going up there. It was earlier, but first case is 2010-01004. It's an abatement request. Tommy Howard's the owner, 463 State Road, 26 Melrose. This property was first seen on August 20th, 2010, and there was a mobile home that had been demolished, and the debris and other unsafe structure was on the property. Notice was sent out on September 1st, 2010. We met with Mr. Howard on the 27th. To make a long story short, the demo permit was obtained. It was never followed through on. Mr. Howard's kind of walked away from the property, and the special magistrate heard the request for going before you to request abatement on March 20th, 2014, and that's what we're requesting today.
Okay, questions, Mr. Simmons, concerning this property?
I have a question about the issue that we can't see.
Oh, it's up there now?
We haven't. Is it coming up?
I've got something on my... Well, exactly that.
That's the property.
So... Did we skip one, Mr. Salmon?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, that?
Yes, there we go.
There we go.
Okay, commissioners, you've got the visual.
Mr. Chairman, is someone here?
Anybody here representing this property this morning? Seeing none.
I so move that the abatement be authorized.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you, John.
The next case is also an abatement, 2005-00488. It's at 133 Oak Circle in Interlochen. This property was first seen on May 17th, 2005. The notice of violation was sent, was left at the site. The mobile home has no warning water or power. As you see, it's deteriorated since that time even. It's basically rusting away and deteriorating. Special magistrate found the property to be in violation on December 13th. He gave the owner until January 13th, 2008, to obtain the permit or a $25 day fine with commands. A $100 administrative fee was also charged. The owner made some attempts to come into compliance, but never got the property into compliance, and the special magistrate heard the case again on December 10th, 2009, and he gave authorization to foreclose. We went back to the special magistrate on March 20th, 2014, then reaffirmed the request to abate the property, and we're here today to do that.
Okay, is there anyone here representing the property? Seeing none. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Simmons?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval for abatement.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next case is actually a fine reduction. Larry Pritchett purchased this property at a tax deed sale, and has abated the property. The gentleman that used to own it was in jail, and actually, the feds got involved in this case also, and... But they have backed off, and Mr. Pritchett purchased property in September at a tax deed sale, and he went forward and cleaned off the property. That's what it used to look like. That's what it looks like now. And we went to the special magistrate on September 18th, 2014, and he concurred with the staff's recommendation to reduce the fine from $42,440 down to $872, which is basically our actual cost. He pays it within 90 days of B.O.C.C. action. Mr. Pritchett cannot be here today. He sends his regrets, but he's in agreement with the recommendation, and he said he will not take 90 days to pay it. He will pay it as soon as possible.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. John, where is that property? I had a hard time visualizing the 8,000 block of St. John's.
It's not too far from the park, the kids' park.
Okay.
I know St. John's Road extended, yeah.
Very well, thank you.
This is also a request for a fine reduction. It's now owned by K.K.N.S. Development. They're in New York, but they purchased property through tax deed sale at the same time that Mr. Pritchett picked his. That was a mobile home that was on it or a structure, and they've taken care of that. The property went up for a tax deed sale, like I said, on November 7th, 2013, and was purchased. The owner discussed the property with the staff and came into compliance and requested a fine reduction. For whatever reason, we didn't come real quickly to the fine reduction process, but probably Mr. Paget was usually pretty adamant about them being there, and he's in New York, so that may have been why it didn't get acted on right away. But Mr. Our new magistrate, Bradley Bradley, heard your request on September 18th, 2014, and concurred with our recommendation to reduce the fine from $9,002 down to $812, if it's paid within 90 days. Mr. Kevin Cole is the officer of K.K.N.S. Development. He's... I've talked to him on the phone, and he's actually mailed in a check already, so...
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good work, John.
You want to deposit that one, Commissioner?
Check's in the mail.
That's right.
All right, commissioners.
Make the deposit.
Let's take a little break. Five minutes reconvene with Mike Brown, if you can set up from now to then.
You should've worn your paint jacket.
I know. Should've been festive. I might work next week.
We'll reconvene our county commission meeting October 14th. Good morning, sir. Mike Brown, Planning and Development.
Mike Brown, Planning and Development Services. This is the adoption hearing for text amendment 14-002, amendments to the future land use element of this county's comprehensive plan. Lot of it is cleanup. Number of the changes relate to legislative changes in the repeal of all references to 9J5 and to redefining urban sprawl, both based on legislative changes from 2011.
Mr. Brown, do you have a copy of 9J5 with you?
No, no.
Give us just a brief description.
9J5 is no longer in existence.
That's right.
It was the, basically, the rules that guided what was included in your local comprehensive plan, the elements, policies, data and analysis requirements. That in 2011, the legislature deleted or repealed 9J5. So, and we had, and much like all the other local governments in the state, when we adopted our comprehensive plan, there were references to Rule 9J5 in there. So, this part of this is cleaning up that effort and getting rid of all those references, because they're no longer applicable.
Okay, and when I ask you that, I ask for the benefit of the viewing community. TV cameras are rolling. We certainly have had this discussion, but
Right.
I like, you know, some folks don't have any idea what that means.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We've also... This amendment deletes some other policies, which were either duplicative or conflict within the element, to clean up and try to streamline the comprehensive plan. We amended policy A122 to better define and clarify the county's minimum housing code, and we also amended, to me, one of the big issue related with this text amendment is amended policy A193A1 to allow an increase in the density within the urban service area or the urban service land use category, from the maximum of nine units to 12 units. This was primarily done to help support the county's investment in water and sewer infrastructure in the East Palatka area. This would allow, again, allow for a maximum of 12 units if you tie into the central water and sewer in that area. And this, there are three areas that are within the county that have designated urban service land use. The two other areas, East Palatka is one and the largest one. Two other areas, one down adjacent to Crescent City, one and the other adjacent to Palatka. To get water and sewer, you have to, would have to annex into those local governments, and so that is really a wash for the county, because then you would be encumbered by the comprehensive plan of those local governments when you annexed into them. So, this really pertains to the East Palatka area, where the county, as you are aware, county's made some significant investments in infrastructure, and this is an effort to support that. These changes have been reviewed by state and regional agencies. We received no significant comments or adverse comments regarding these staff's recommending adoption of these changes. Any questions?
Commissioners? I know the workshop brought a lot of questions out, and I don't believe this is good work. We had some concerns, you know, that we kind of dovetailed off of this, as far as those family plots went, and I know we're working on that.
We're still working on that.
We appreciate staff on that, but as this reads, it's a win-win for rural county, as far as I'm concerned. Anything else?
All right, I have a public comments that are on on this.
It didn't. I read it. It's not a hearing, is it?
Yes, it is. It is a hearing.
Okay.
It's our...
All right, anybody... Let me write that in. It's a hearing. It's not there. Okay, anybody from the public would like to weigh in on some questions or comments? Okay, seeing none for the public. We'll close it to Commissioner deliberation.
Mr. Chairman, I so move that we adopt the changes to the future land use element of the county comprehensive plan, and delete the references to the rule of the Florida Administrative Code 9J5, as well as deleting those policies, A11, A2, A11, C4, and A14, 10C6, and amend the policies that increase the maximum allowable density of the 12 units per acre in the urban service area land use, as well as replace the definition of urban sprawl consistent with the changes listed in Florida statute.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It carries. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it for all your hard work on that. Okay, item 10, County Administrator Rick Leary.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we have brought to your attention previously the fact that owners of property at 137 County Road 315 have indicated a desire to donate that real property to the county for use as a senior citizen center in the Interlochen area at some point in the future, when the county is able to make funds available to modify that structure to be used as such. So, we have received from the owners of that property a formal letter offering that real property to the county as a donation in exchange for the commitment of that property being used as a senior citizen center in the future. So, we have that letter in the agenda and need for the board to formally act to accept that offer of donation, if you wish to accept that property.
Absolutely. Commissioner Harvey?
This is exciting, Mr. Chairman. We've been talking about this for over 10 years that I can recall, and now that this organization is disbanding, they are really excited about turning it over for a senior community citizen center, and we're really looking forward in the west end of getting this. It's a 5,000-square-foot building. It needs a little bit of work on it, but not much, as we were briefed in our workshop, and I believe it's going to be a huge asset for the West Putnam area.
Okay, Commissioner Powell, sir?
It's a great thing. It borders on District 5, and I think it's a great asset to us out there, and I wholeheartedly support that.
Okay, it is close to each other, and I apologize for getting that a little backwards. So, would you like to offer a motion, sir, supporting this?
No, Larry brought it to the table. He'll make it. I'll second it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, as a Board of County Commissioners, accept the donation of the Orange Blossom CB Club located on 137 South County Road 315.
And a hearty second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes carry it. Congratulations, both you gentlemen. It's a great project. We don't have to start from ground up, and we get another senior citizen, another great amenity for Putnam County. That's a good thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, Mr. Leary, you're still on with your appointments, or anything there? Commissioners supporting these appointments?
I have none.
Okay, I have none.
Have none.
One in three. It's in your court for next time. How about that? Okay, item 11, County Attorney Russ Castleberry.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, although we do have an executive session scheduled at 11 o'clock, and that'll be our last item of business that will be closed to the public under the sunshine law. And so, I assume, once we get rid of that, once we complete our executive session, we'll be adjourned for the day.
Okay, very well. All right, last but not least, Clerk of Court, Mr. Tim Smith.
Mr. Chairman, we have no items today. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you again for the West Putnam celebration coming up, and we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, for the good of the order, anything to announce?
Do we have any information as to how the task force is doing on solid waste? They're getting questions about it. Have not heard anything specific.
Mr. Leary, what have you heard on our new solid waste task force? I know they met and signed off for voted-in officers facilitated by Mr. Brian Teepel.
I mean, they had their organizational meeting. I think they have scheduled regular meetings for the first and third Mondays of the month, and I guess they really have their first meeting in earnest coming up next Monday. And Mr. Teepel of the Northeast Planning Council is facilitating those meetings. I think Greg Walker has been... Was Greg Walker the elected chairman of that board? And they'll be having their really...
That was a good pick. Mr. Walker brings to the table some experience from the financing in the New River Project. So, this is, you know, he's not new to the process. So, I think the board will move and come up with some innovative solutions for our landfill. Okay, I'd just like to remind everybody that we have the Paddle Florida event this weekend, as well as a major bass tournament, which we have on every weekend this month. It's been a really good month for tourism in Putnam County, but watch out for those tourists. Welcome them. Tell them all about us, and look out for our new paddlers. There'll be about 150 kayakers and canoeers in the area, and we're camping down in the We lack a State Forest and the Putnam County Parks and Recorations. Particularly, the Citizens Trails Organization has put this together, and we really welcome those folks and look forward to having them here in our county this weekend. Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Putnam County will be thrust into the federal spotlight on Friday, October 17th. Our beloved former Circuit Court Judge Carlos Mendoza investiture is Friday, October 17th, at the Federal Courthouse facilities in Orlando, and he is always going to be a part of the Putnam County Infrastructure Putnam County infrastructure and I have the humble honor of doing the invocation during that investiture.
Congratulations.
So, I will be in Orlando Friday and also I have been looking online for courses on being a father-in-law come Saturday.
I can help you with that.
My firstborn daughter, Carla Nicole Flag, is gonna cross that threshold into marriage and we're gaining a son, Jarvis Wright.
And you're, and the Wright family is right. You're gonna be just fine.
Great.
Because from a great family and I'm proud for both these individuals in uniting as a couple.
Looking forward to it.
All right, with that, let's go out on a high note. Will you offer a motion for adjournment, Mr. Flag?
Recession. Offer motion for recess.
Second, very well.
Chip, we don't have a workshop today. It's next week, right?
It's, it's a weird month. We had three.